I'm eight, request to discuss the development of the Orange Camp point. Mr. Hurley, or Mr. Dome, excuse me.
Thank you all very much, Mr. Merrick, Mr. Turner, we have to be talking tonight about it. This is a forward-thinking, very bullet point, moving to the point kind of request. It's something that we've all kind of talked about a little bit, which is, as you know, last official commission meeting, we had a complained amendment before you, if you put it down, to a specific texture matter, there's only about eight words, change compland, and essentially it was allowed 152 townhomes, you downed it, it's as a maximum, whatever you develop in DC, that vote down, let's legislate the project if you so, that's fine. So two things about going forward, one substantive, one procedural, we'll start with the substantive. You've got 32 acres of prime real estate in the intersection of the four lane, down to the Orange Camp and J4. It is a goldmine, a potential tax revenue, and it is sitting vacant with nobody can use it for anything right now in this group. So we need to work together to talk about it. My proposal for that is we can do it in at least one or a series of workshops. I don't think, I think history has proven over the last two years, we didn't get very far substantively by trying to do, you know, like we're just doing a variance for a new front porch somewhere, but we just have, this is a big deal. The economic report, as you know, would have added, on those proposals, with $90 million, actually it was in $200 million, that's a few degrees. Now, I think what was, so that substantively, what we know is, you don't want that, right? You don't want 152 townhomes, you don't want 300 acres, got it, understand, we need to talk about what you want, we need to talk about what we know there isn't, is a demand for in today's market. If there are things that there aren't demand for in today's market, we need to talk about what we have to do to that property as a property owner, and as a city, that's our distinction on how we make the trajectory to use it if we want. So that's the substantive part, is to say, let's do that workshop fashion, so that we can ask questions, have exchanges, and he said, there's information we don't have, or you don't have, and what, we talk about the best way we can get it. Whether that's outside consultants that we hire, or that you hire, you know, we've got obviously some commercial brokers who've been trying to work with this property, and we can have them participate, say, these are the types of uses we've had approaches, these are the questions we were asked. It's not that commercial people have approached about the property, it's what the types of uses are, and what they take together, and what they pay versus the infrastructure that's necessary to keep the place to do it. So, you know, we can have those substantive conversations. Procedurally, the second half, and this isn't as big of a deal, this to me is just more of a consensus and being procedural. That was the last official commission meeting you had, like workshops and said they haven't had a commission. That application died with that vote, unless someone who voted against it, or voted to deny it, essentially, were to do a motion to reconsider. Why would we do that, and what would it mean? All it would do is say, if there's a motion, would say, vote against it, anybody who seconded, it would bring it back to life, not necessarily for the next commission meeting, and maybe never, because what I would suggest is, simply bring it back to life, so the application itself could be reconsidered from the issue. I think one of the things we learned after the vote, talking to some of you individually, was, you didn't necessarily fully realize that at that meeting, you could have said, you know, I just don't like the idea that this could result in a fully residential project with no conversion. And it could have, 152 townhomes, 300 acres, it could have, right? And in fact, those are the users we have aligned, probably would have used it all, maybe small commercial outbursts. I don't think some of you realized, basically, when you told us that you could have said, you know what, I would support this if there were no townhomes, and we just had the apartments, and then we had 16 acres of commercial available, and I got Orange Camp over there. I don't think there was a realization that those things could be talked about and changed, and/or it could have been, you know what, we need to talk about this, well, let's continue this, so the next meeting, let's have workshops in the meantime. So procedurally, if someone voted against it, was inclined to motion reconsider, and it got seconded, and three votes supported, that application itself could be alive. Subtext is doing wonderful workshops, talk about what might be a more acceptable approach, more acceptable notion of the types of growth, more acceptable things on the types of meter, the types of housing. If at the end of those workshops, the consensus is, you know what, we don't want a single unit of residential in any way, shape, or form on the west side of High Court, then that application just goes live, right? There are land use entitlements in there now, very, heavily condensed commercial use. On the land use side, the PD itself, if you specific uses, like the auto mall uses, that's going to expire this year. Once it expires, on this kind of daylight slate, any of the commercial uses that are entitled to land use can come back and be approved in the new PD. But, as we can talk about the workshops, we won't give it the weeds here, what we believe is, there ain't going to be anything without the sub residential. So, you know, I think we'd like to explore those in the workshops, we could talk about, you know, I think in that conversation, some of industrial type uses, we could talk about why there is or isn't interest for that kind of stuff right now, whether it take, if it is a PD, have a more fully developed and complete understanding of the real landscape that's out there for the demand for that property. So substantively, I think there's going to be, we're all saying, Dave, workshops are a great idea. My procedural request, if someone is so inclined, do the motion reconsiderations, so the application itself is allowed. One thing that that will help do is, we don't go back to anything, you know, which is kind of a silly step, to talk about eight words, and the changes we might need, you know, maybe we can take 15 of those out, and we can talk at the workshops, and back to the commission meeting, if there's ordinance that we think are more better, federal reflects what the city wants. So that will allow that to happen, and frankly, we're not going to bother trying to bring a pack or a vote in the workshops, like I said, the consensus is, you know what, even if all we get is the Wendy's, and the Dog River, and the Drakelere, would rather have it at the residential on the outside, and that's fine, then it's going to die, right? That comp then, it's going to die, and it'll come back in the PD, when we have end users that want to do something else. But I think procedurally, this would just give us that option. So, if someone voted against it, if like, you keep that application alive, that's fine too. The city attorney I was talking earlier, he believes that there's no prohibition in your eye under, right, that some cities say, if you have, like, it's voted down, but most reconsider, you can't bring it back for six months. And that's pretty common, and I think that glances, I think that's true. It may not be true, I still say, why not keep it alive, just at least a favor, I'll just skip some, go through some steps along the way, everyone will be applying, even if the application needs a way to run about that, it's just, it's a very simple ordinance and proposal, it needs some changes, obviously, and it's, we're not going to try and reargue that it should change and run about what we presented before, we just won't have that conversation about what would we do then. I think some of you are seeing this early brought up, for those who may, this is what something could look like if it was just apartments, and you could have commercial outbursts of all, and Orange Camp, and then there's that Lake Helen porch along Frontage Road, it's pretty significant, could accommodate some use of stuff. Those are the kind of conversations we have about how to bring the property. So that, that's it. The substantive is, let's do some workshops, and procedural is, if we're going to do that, let's at least keep the application alive. I'm not asking that we do it alive, put it on next month's agenda, I think we need to have these one workshops, that is.
I do have a question. Your own. Procedurally, I thought we voted to not make the change to the comprehensive plan, I didn't think we voted to deny the application as a whole.
The application was changed, not comprehensive.
That was the entire application?
That all we had before you was comprehensive.
Okay, okay.
And I think that's part of the underlying confusion, right? So when we, we had an application pending, for a change to the PD also, that is what showed departments, next townhomes, no developer or anything else, that ultimately, a decision was made, well, there's no point in talking about that, we're not going to take this compland. But I think what, part of the problem with that ended up happening is, I think there was at least a little bit of the thought, for some of you, that, well, if we vote yes to this compland change, they're going to be able to build greater apartments than 152 townhomes. That wasn't really ever true, there would have happened to be, the PD did approve this, and engineer all those other things, but it's theoretically true, and I think that's enough, like, I think that was enough for, for his degree, to say, I don't know if there even would be a possibility of that. So that's message for, loud and clear, well, let's talk about what we would, would work, and then go back and structure it, so we already have, yes, that could happen.
Yes, please. Yeah. That's it. Okay. I don't disagree with anything that Rob just said. Actually, after the meeting, the last meeting we had, or the compland amendment, we voted down, Rob and I had a lot of emails changing back and forth, trying to come up with an idea, based on what I heard at the meeting, and a little bit of conversation after the meeting, trying to kind of find a way to make this property more developable. At that time, it was my ability to focus, I mean, you know, some type of commercial, you know, let's expand PD, make it very open to, and enticing to somebody to come in and develop it. They, they're right, because there's a lot of commercial development in that area, or a commercial entitled property that's not being developed, so it's good indication that the market is in there for, because if it was there, it would already be built. But I don't have a problem with a motion for reconsideration, as long as the only thing we're doing is keeping the application alive, and not bringing back that same application for your vote, because at the compland stage, as Rob was referring to theoretically, what we're setting as a policy, and what y'all voted down, was adding residential as allowed in the land use, the law rule was already about that. And the drawing that Mr. Hurley showed after the meeting, where it had residential and commercial, was theoretically possible, based on that land use. What also was theoretically possible, is all residential, and also was theoretically possible, was all commercial. What I've got, and I think Rob and I agree with, the signal's pretty clear, all residential is not something the commission supported. So I think we're going to have to change the compland, and if we reconsider, just to keep it alive, so we can go in and amend it, that's fine, because I think we're going to have to amend it to bring back something that most likely, is going to have to say something like, it could be all commercial, or it could be mixed use, and what we can keep, we're going to have to have protections in there, based on what I saw, possibly potentially get the support of at least the majority, that it can't be all residential. We're going to have to have some protections in that land use, and that's going to have to be added in. I was comfortable, when I, I looked through the code, trying to find something that said, once something voted down, it can't be considered for a certain period of time. I couldn't find anything like that, and Rob and I talked before the meeting, and I was like, I have no problem just continuing, you know, they voted it down, we can just continue with the same application, and then, you know, but from a, if it makes him feel more comfortable from a procedural standpoint, for there to be, the votes to reconsider, from the perspective that it just keeps the application alive, I'm fine with that too, as long as we all understand that we're not bringing that, it's not coming back really truly to that application if you reconsider, it just keeps the application alive, so we can amend it to bring back something new, we can reconsider after the workshop, I think the workshop's a great idea, so.
So you need a motion to?
You need a motion, but it also needs to be a motion from the, from, motion set from the parties who voted in favor of the denial. So whoever voted to deny the last application, needs to make a motion and a second, then that can be, we can reconsider it solely for the purpose of keeping it alive. So we can then have a workshop, see if we can come up with language that, at least a majority of you are comfortable with, moving forward, with that, make sure that, that drawing that Mr. Hurley shows you, is something that we can say, yeah, that's going to happen, that's how it's going to more or less look, you give us a general idea, because I just don't want you to be in a position where you, you base your policy on a particular drawing, and that there's so many others, and only thing that happened. And that's, that's the concern I have as your attorney, just to make sure that, if that's what you like, then I need to make sure there's language in that policy, that not only could that be what occurs, that is what will occur. That you don't get tied down in some quasi judicial hearing, about somebody else after they sell the property, and they come in and demand, we want to build all this, or, you know, in a different way, and we have that right under the compland way of order. So I just want to make sure that yours is protected as I can be, while still making sure the property is developable, you know, not too restricted, that when we, you've seen these pictures, at the land use stage, comprehensive stage, we have a pretty good comfort level, that that's what's going to happen. Yes, when you get to the zoning stage, and we do the PD amendment, and we have the drawing, the site plan, the renditions, at that point, you're pretty certain, you do the zoning, that's what's going to be, like, they could go build the auto mall right now, but we're not in the zoning stage, we're at a policy setting stage, and when you get to that zoning stage, you have less discretion than you have right now. So it's a step process, and I fully support what Rob's suggesting, and we understand that that, what you voted down, even though it's being a motion reconsider, it's not going to be reconsidered. What was voted down will not be reconsidered, you just give us an opportunity to amend it.
So basically, it would be reasonable to make a motion to reconsider and table, to be picked up at a workshop meeting, and discuss?
I don't know if that I would table, I would just do the motion reconsider, that means, within the city, theoretically, this application will still be alive, we still, we didn't schedule it for a workshop.
Well, does not a motion to reconsider then start the process of reconsidering in this meeting?
No.
So we can just, we can move to reconsider in the future?
Yeah, for, solely for the purpose of keeping this application alive.
Right.
With the understanding, this can be the motion, a motion to reconsider, solely for the purpose of keeping this application alive, with the understanding that this application, as ordered, will not be reconsidered.
It would actually be a dollar reconsider, here we could add the property to the change in the session.
Oh, okay.
But it's second to me from anybody, if the motion has to be reconsidered.
You were the time breaker.
I don't know why we can't just pull the commercials without doing the reconsideration.
That's my question.
Yes, well, but what's been said is that it's. I'll tell you one little part of that, and it's, I mean, it's, one little part of that, it's going to be, this, this structure, right, of that ordinance, and application, and anything else, will be entirely the same, except it, we only need a change if there's going to be some residential allowed. So what was denied was 152 townhomes, so if there's going to be any compland amendment at all, it's going to be something with residential, a blessing of that. Or maybe there is a lot of workshops saying it'll be a, you know, percentage of available acreage, it'll only be residential percentage, it's something that makes sure that there's that protection, that Scott was mentioning, that, well, we know, we might not know exactly what it's going to be, but we know what it can't be, it can't be all residential, right? So we get to do that. If the app, if it's a no, the application we had in the end, and it's a no, there is a state law that requires that an application must go to a planning board first, and then go back to another thing, so if we go in through a notice requirement from the planning board again, and a planning board hearing again, when really, discussions taking place here, anyway, so I think at a minimum, I think effectively, probably, at the end of the day, the biggest difference, we don't have to go through the notice and the application and newspaper advertising, and planning board, planning board agreement, we get to skip that step and get where we all want to be anyway. That, that really is probably the biggest difference.
Do you agree?
The only difference, I think, really, I'm.
I'm just not a trusting person.
I'll tell you this, my line to you, you can, it should take my word.
Take mine.
So would either, Mr. Hurley, someone, or you want to make a motion to reconsider? Do you want, sorry, do you want to make a motion to reconsider? Um, I don't think I even have to, I've been looking at that, I know, I've done that before, and, but then, looking at the Robert's orders of order stuff, I don't see any, I actually saw a discussion where that's not even required, so. Actually, a chair can, according to some people, and according to some people, they can, but I.
I feel that if you ask.
The whole idea of this motion is to dot our i's and cross our t's, I understand that.
The interesting thing is, I, when I was looking for this, I can't, I can't find anywhere we actually adopted the Rock.
I know. There's that too.
It is a shame, I wonder where you sent the rocks.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to bring that up, but yeah. So, I would be, to, to just speak about it for a minute. The, the property there, that Mr. Hurley owns, and that you're representing, there, his interests, that's a, we have a vested interest as a city into what goes there, but they have a very vested interest in, in creating something there, being part of the American dream, and I don't want to be obstructionist to the, to the entire process, and we're, I don't think our job is to simply be obstructionist, I think we need to keep the conversation going, that's an important piece of property in this city, and even if we're an unimportant piece of property, our job is to continue the conversation with anybody that owns anything in this city. So that's why I am amenable to keeping this conversation going, this is a much more complex conversation, but where dotting the i's and crossing the t's is critical, I get that, but I will, if you would be more comfortable in doing it this way, I'll pass the ballot, and for the purpose of this, I won't take long. I will make a motion to reconsider the, the motion that was voted down in the last That's my motion to speak in favor of it, again, it's just to, actually, I shouldn't speak in favor of, is there a second? And that can come from anybody.
Make a motion that Scott stated.
Basically, a motion to reconsider.
And?
Is there an and? Should I, should I flush that out a little bit?
Well, I, you know, you wanted to put in there that motion to reconsider, to keep the application alive solely for the purpose of having workshop meetings and steps amendments to that.
That sounds perfect, I like that. I will make a motion to reconsider.
Say what I said. You say it, what you said.
I'll make a motion to, say what he said.
Second.
Okay, so now, over to you, motion to second.
Motion is to make a second, for discussion.
I'll start the discussion, since I made the motion. Again, I think it's our job as a commission to keep an open line of communication with anybody in this city that wants to get something done. I want to be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem. So that's my, my point in reconsidering the motion. I do have strong feelings about the heavy residential, we've all discussed that, that was why I voted no, as I said, I've made lots of promises on the campaign trail, I won't support identity residential, I won't do it, and then, this came along. I didn't say that, knowing this was coming along, I didn't say that on the campaign trail, with any idea that it would ever happen, I didn't think it would. Identity residential typically can't much happen in Lake Helen, because of our, particularly our subject involved, almost impossible to do in Lake Helen. Y'all found a way around, not, you can find a way around it, that sounds nefarious, it's not, you have, there's a solution there, so it's possible on your property. It's a whole new thing that I did not anticipate on the campaign trail, so I think we should, we should keep the conversation going, that's why I made the motion.
Any further discussion?
Anyone else on the way in?
Yeah, I just like the idea that's being open for discussion, to work with them to come up with something that's a win-win for both of us, to help relieve some of our tax burden on our citizens.
That's, that's the common ground, you know? We have, that, that property in the minds of most people that Lake Helen is a funding mechanism, and I keep screaming about funding mechanisms to fix our infrastructure, and there is one there, and to not continue the conversation, because our common ground is, they want to develop the property, we want to develop it in a way that provides funding for us, and so, to not continue to talk until we can find a model that works, I think is, 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 it's not good for either of us, I was looking for fancy words, it's not good for either of us. She doesn't trust anyone else.
I don't have a problem talking about anything, but I don't like this reversal of a vote that was done, I don't trust the whole process.
Well, listen. And, and that's a very reasonable thing to say, I don't like reversing a vote either, and I, I weighed this out carefully before this meeting, in my mind, that it is important to keep this communication open. I was eliminated by your comments and by Scott's comments, as to how that needs to happen, and how we dot the i's and cross the t's, I'm, I'm more than willing to be a team player, and making sure that we do it right legally.
And Owen, I, you, is that reversing the vote, that's a little harsher than what, that, that vote that occurred last meeting is still standing, that, that.
We're reconsidering.
So here, it's an undue, or pre-issued, voted on, you still have that vote last time, so my view is, this is an opportunity, you can see if you can bring, work together, bring something back, and satisfy all partners, and I think, my job, staff's job, is to evaluate every reasonable, feasible solution to develop in that property, and present it, educate you on it, present it to you along the developer, and you all say yes or no, that's, you know, we're not, we're not going to advocate, I'm certainly not going to advocate things, but I, I do think it's important for the financial stability of the city, I mean, I've had a pretty good grasp of the financial stability, long-term, this is, this is the goal used for the city, something needs to be there, and it's been sitting there for a long time vacant, so we need to evaluate every reasonable opportunity to develop this property, protecting what we want, obviously protecting what, the land residents, they're going to be involved in this too, they'll get these meetings objected, whatever you do, but we, we got to explore all, we really just have to sit down and explore every possible key solution, so no stone is in turn, so would we say, look, we try it?
And, and to be clear, if, if the same thing were presented again, I would vote no, I, I won't be voting yes for this, I'm not changing my vote on this, I'm continuing the conversation to find something, hopefully, that we can vote for. I think the conversation is healthy.
We have a motion to second, I need some physical discussion.
I'm agreeing with you, chatting about it some more, but I wanted to be clear that I'm not in favor of any identity residential, and that's where the vote came from last time, and then we talked, you know, we have talked since then about this, but just let me clear on that.
Mr. Merrick? Yes, I can clarify a few questions for the city attorney. We had a discussion, we had a plan that acceptable, both for the developer and the city, and that would almost necessarily, from what I hear, be different than what was presented by some, will the next elect go back to being?
The commission can decide to, but it, it does not, it's automatic, because when the counter recommendation that came up, the claim is unimportant to the commission at the last meeting, the commission had the authority to amend that at that meeting, and the document was amended, you know, they took in the recommendation from the DNC, and they could have amended it to address the comments that were made.
Would it have been necessary to?
It's not automatic, it's within, it's within their discretion to say, you know, this has changed too much, we like their opinion, but it's not the man that's, it's not applied, or being required, because we've gotten there, and we've done a lot already, the application, although it's a change. And it's very common for our. And it's very common for our patients to change from the advisory board to what finally gets adopted at the governor body without going back, that is, that's not a common.
Thank you for that clarification.
If you have another mouth, I'm going to open up the public, Kelly Frasca.
Hello, Frasca, I'm Ashley, I just want to thank this commission for the support of us. And considering, considering you listening more on this project, as you described, this is, this is more than just a project, this is a future. You know, and often, this commission talks about being visionaries, and I believe that projects like this give that ability to the commission to use their seats to look into our future and see what type of, what type of Lake Helen we're looking at. I believe that we are very fortunate that this project is on the other side of the bipolar, therefore it allows us to have a little bit of hope. And there's a lot of future in that, because as you know, this opens up to our business and employment district. So I thank you for listening to the courses, and I thank Mr. Hurley and his team for coming in and listening to ours too about the bench residential that we are interested in, and coming with the solution that goes up today, so thank you.
Question, call for question. Number one?
No.
Number two?
Yes.
Number three, is she yes? Number four?
No.
And number five?
Yes.
Motion, please.
Thank you, and what I add is to have the most successful workshop we possibly can, I really highly encourage you to, and staff, to reach out to us with specific questions in advance, and hey, could we do this, would we support this, why can't we do this, what do we have to do to do this? Please do that in advance, so we can give you the best information possible, because there are certainly audiences that we don't have.
I want to go to town park. I can send you information, I know it's probably too big with development, you know, all that land.
I think it's actually, I don't know.
You know, it's sort of like, yes, I love that place, and it'd be really, really neat there, probably the more commercialized residential in charge, considering the, the great selling over there.
There's that, and it's one in Lake Mary, there's the, correct the stress around, I don't know, crumble in there, my staff's good, people are crumpling the bed. Yeah, it's all commercial, come out of the old residential, where the Saints are in the back by, by, I don't know. There's a jail, there's a, actually, it's.
Oh, that one that was just, oh, that one that was just built, I didn't know that was there.
Yeah, I'll take it. Any of those kind of questions, considerations, because some of those things we do have in this, this property is under sale, it's a commercial property for six years. So we know, and we can tell you what types of businesses have that thought and interest in, and what they needed, what they can pay, we know what they pay, we know where they pay, we know what is and isn't happening in 44 and 472, or why it isn't happening. So those are kind of sections we were looking for and added, so we can make the best informed decision on part and what to pursue, and maybe on your end, if us were to listen in on time.
And I also think having your commercial realtors at that workshop to kind of give a market analysis, that was the one thing I kind of kept mentioning, would be really nice to have, is what is, what is the, for professionals to do this, what is their vision for the next 10 years of residential, commercial, industrial, visitor, that would be very helpful, and we just want to. And I'll send you, I can send the, the site plan for the town park.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item nine, new business, three point three members of the PLDRC and one member of the HPP.
Mr. Mayor, from the commission, we have three members, as you indicated, from the PLDRC, whose terms have expired, one member of the historic presentation board, all four of the individuals have been given that are willing to serve again, so it's a recommendation that those individuals who affected last October won.
Just make a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to reappoint three members listed for the PLDRC and one member for the HPP.
Have a motion in a second to reappoint the three members of PLDRC and one to the HPP. Any discussion?
Okay, if they're willing this to serve, that's all I have.
That's, that's a good point. We didn't have one question from somebody when this went on the agenda, as to whether or not, you know, people had to rotate off. We had that happen, not a have to rotate off, but we had somebody else applying for the position, which made it more reasonable for somebody to, to rotate off. And accept a new, new person to the board, that is not the case this time, nobody has applied, we've had notice of asking for applications. Again, thank you all for being willing to continue your service. I have a motion in a second to approve this, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, flag sign? Thank you, thank you very much, all of you.
Now we have a recommendation on selection for a particular playground, Mr. City Administrator.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, approximately 18 months ago, the city applied for a CPG grant from Los Angeles County. We were awarded a grant of $62,000 to be used for reconstruction of the playground in Los Angeles Park. That particular program, guys, in the other time, designs were created, we've met with residents on a number of occasions, the commission was met with residents in public sessions on a number of occasions. It was put out, called a bid, through the name star process, which is a national, foreign, a national way of advertising bids for all the Angeles County's, and we received no bids. We went back and rebid the project again, and we received one bid. That bid was open, and it was analyzed, and I had two options, as you know, one for approximately $325,000 and one for approximately $365,000. I met with the residents and ad hoc committee of interested individuals in Los Angeles Park, you know, last evening, and after a good deal of discussion, they agreed to support, I think with some enthusiasm actually, the $365,000 grant, excuse me, a bid. And I think some explanation needs to be given to you in terms of financing, the $365, approximately $62,000 of that will come from the CPG grant. Another $25,000 will come from a settlement from the individual that built the house on the wrong lot, taking a portion of Los Angeles Park in the process. There was a settlement, so $25,000 of that would be allocated toward this particular project. There was also a discussion that we've had on a couple of occasions, Kelly Frasca was back there taking my photo, but, she brought up an interesting point, apparently the last four years, the, what's the name of the?
Stress Buster 5K.
Stress Buster 5K, has been advertised as a fundraiser for playground equipment. And for the last four years, the funds that were received and net of the expenses were not used toward capital improvements that were allocated to park maintenance. Some could argue that's supposed, same thing intended, blah blah, but anyway, there's some credibility issue that Kelly would like us to be able to rectify by taking the money from the general fund in the amount that the last four years would have been net in those particular stress buster events. And use that money to apply to this particular purchase of oil, so that when she advertises next year, there would be no question that those funds actually were used for capital improvements in the playground and not for operations and maintenance. So, that's the mechanism for funding, it will clear up then the issue of the first CPG grant. There is a second CPG grant that's in the process that deals with, is generally just simply referred to as the basketball court portion of the park, that has yet to be bid and designed, it will be coming up in short order, which means probably about six months. But in the meantime, we are already very delinquent in terms of timing with the CPG staff at the county, so we really need to make a decision to go forward, as I mentioned, the ad hoc committee was most supportive of that particular program that we just put out to bid. And the use of the funds as I described, for the $365,000, $365,000 more option. With that, I think I'll, if you want to hear it from Paul Smith, she's kind of the chairman of the ad hoc committee, she's available in the audience. Roger was there last evening, Kelly Frasca's here, Nancy's here, those are all members, I don't see Frasca's others, they could all state to the committee's deliberations last evening, if you'd like to hear them.
Oh, we have a recommendation from staff to accept this bid and move forward with, with instruction, do I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Have a motion to accept the bid, and a second, any further discussion?
I'd like to know how much money was in 5K fund for the last four years.
I haven't really gone through the books to come up with that numbers, it just came up, like.
Those numbers.
I would estimate probably $25,000.
I don't have the numbers on me today. What was the number?
More than that.
Whatever it is, I think it's, I think it's very, I think the word credible is a good word, it's a very credible thing to attribute that to the stress buster, whatever it is. We're going to be spending the amount of bid, no matter how extended, giving credit, giving credit to this stress buster, I think this is fair.
I just wanted to know how much of that was going to come out of the party, especially with what's happened at City Hall.
I'm sure they have it.
We did $45,000, just for jumping off the spot.
But, Greg.
One of the things that came up in the discussion is, I met with a guy that does playground projects, they got an office in Deltona, and they do for Deltona County stuff. He admitted he pissed the bid, what was on the program, he would like to have put in a bid, but he did tell me about, when I asked him, I says, well, these are the equipment that was currently bidable. And he says, in comparison, it's like Craftsman tools versus Black and Decker tools. So, Compan is the Craftsman tool type side. They have a better warranty than the other one does, even though it's a depreciating warranty, it decreases as the equipment gets older, it can be expected. But that's why I was, one of the reasons, played a favor when we had a meeting where we were wanting the Compan one instead of the, the sports tire or something.
Game tire.
The game tire.
Thank you for illuminating us on that part of the discussion, that is interesting and helpful. Any further discussion? All the question, all the favor, say aye? Aye, aye, any opposed, flag sign? Motion carries, and can I give, amen?
Amen. Do we need a second motion?
I thought, oh, I thought you already listened again. I'm sorry, what?
Do we need a second motion for me to make the plans?
I, probably not a bad idea, just to, and I'm sorry, I, this, Ms. Frasca, if you'd like to.
I just wanted to add in that when we were looking over the two options, as Roger said, not that they have warranty, but the price difference, when we were looking at it, it was interesting, we could get it lower. And my suggestion was if we talked to manufacturer, and rather than lower the bid, but to add in the post in sales for the sum, and some media equipment, which they also have, so to kind of strengthen that, something we want anyways.
Mayor, I did talk with the manufacturer representative today, and I were going to discuss all those features with us.
Thank you.
I would suggest we, the maximum you're authorizing will be our understanding will be the bid amount, if we can get it to less, so much so better.
I think that is understood.
It does say on there that final payment is based on actual quantity installed.
So I think it would be appropriate to have a motion, just to have it on record, to approve the.
Make a credit. Use of the stress buster revenue for the last four years towards.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to use the stress buster money that's been collected the last four years towards this capital project, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, flag sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You are welcome, and thank you, you've done a lot of work to make that happen, so I appreciate it, it's nice when it comes to provision, I know. Okay. We are finally to recommendation for the acceptance of a new contract replacement for, Mr. City Administrator.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, you recall, the commission asked that this year, prior to creation of an assessment, that we sit down with Wasterville, with whom we've had a contract for a number of years, in an attempt to negotiate a five-year extension to our contract. And failing to have to go out to public bids, we would have that as the basis for our assessment. We did sit down with Ken DeForest and Wasterville, we are satisfied, the numbers that we have come up with, which I distributed to you this evening, are those that are more than acceptable. He has shared with us similar contracts with other cities, and we have also checked with other cities who use other companies. And I will, just as, I hope there's nothing for the press, and I don't want to bat an eye to the cities, other cities have had terrible experiences lately with refuse collection. Turnover of personnel, costs, anyway, just not a pretty picture, but in my experience, now the last two years I've been here, I can honestly say no more than five complaints a year. And there's one city that I would mention, talking to the other day, who's having five complaints a day out of here, so. We most heartily recommend Wasterville to five-year extension, the city attorney has drafted a resolution adopting the amendment, and that's a very. So, you want to hear from Mr. DeForest, incidentally, Ken will be retiring at the end of this month, he's been with us twenty-eight years.
That's right.
So he wants to say goodbye.
Well, Mr. Mayor, commission, and City Administrator.
Well, Mr. Mayor, commission and City Administrator, I appreciate you allowing us to be here today. I wonder also, before we get started on any discussion about contract, I want to introduce Susie Dahl. She handles our municipal marketing and government affairs and sheets very involved with everything before we come here. And Steve Cameron. Forty-one days from now, Steve's the new division manager for Waispro and I'll be sailing off into the sunset. And Steve and I have worked together for the last six years. Steve and I do everything together for those five calls a year. I probably call up Steve every... You always said, Steve, go fix this. So we've worked together well. We had a nice transition plan. We hired a new operations manager to replace Steve about eight months ago. And after he was up on board and then ready to go, four months ago, when Steve and I have been working closely, and Steve was working with me on things that I know that he knew we didn't do. So you're good hands and the company's also asking us to stay on for at least a year as a retainer in just in case. He has an answer phone you call. So with that, we have for you, I think, the information on our pricing. Just a few highlights of our post pricing. In addition to the prices you see there, going forward is to get 100% of the CPI. One of the reasons we had a big gap between where we needed to be, it wasn't only the changes in pricing of the economy and COVID. We had only gotten 75% of the CPI each year. So that gap, the delta kept getting bigger and bigger. We also had it in the last amendment where we renewed the contract. The first two years was no CPI. So the difference between the cost of service was already growing and then everything went crazy with the increase in the costs, the availability of parts, labor, everything else grew of our prices. So as the city administrator said, we actually, for the one-year contract extension, we managed to price for you with Concena. We've been to the city of Concena in 2019. They have a couple CPIs. The current price is the same as theirs when it's net to us. So you have a franchise fee, 10%, and they don't, but the current rate is the same. We agreed for the residential that we'll just continue going forward with 100% of CPI. So next year's rate will be adjusted by the CPI. We didn't have CPI available. The contractor requires a March full or March evaluation of the change in the index. That doesn't come out until maybe the third week long, so it'll be almost May before we let it mount and then the city will have that amount as part of it. The commercial, there's a slight typo here, so as a recent discussions, the prices on the sheet will be for the full first year. There'll be no adjustment, no CPI adjustment in October of this year. And we'll jump off the following year with CPI applied to the market.
And I'll make just a slight modification, clarification in the... Then to make that clear, another discussion we have a moment today, just to make it through that residential will be adjusted on October 1st, the day after the CPI adjustment, but the commercial that's in here will take that October 1st, first year guidance will not be installed October 1st. That's right.
What's that?
I assume the numbers here under size, just two cubic yards, four, six, eight, that's a size?
That's correct. On the commercial, it's two, four, six, and eight cubic yard containers. Yep. And then across the top there is no variance per week.
The other change I would know from the store on CPI is our current contract has a, is a max CPI adjustment. No, never be over the 2% and never be higher than 4%. Then if they go like...
Any further discussion? Well, no, not discussion. We have a motion to...
I'll make a motion for the... Within that motion, could you also waive the city's bidding process?
Yes, again, I make a motion to engage Waispro with a new contract and with the general bidding process. You second that motion as well?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, I do. I guess I'm not really understanding when you, Mr. Attorney, when you talked about the CPI and falling off of the 2% and to the 4% part, because you just completely explain that one time.
Sure. Currently, right now, they have a CPI adjustment, still have to ask for it, but our current level says regardless of that CPI adjustment, it would be 75, it's currently 75% of the CPI, it would never be less than 2%. So say if you calculated it and it came out to 1.7, it would be 2. Or if you calculate, but it would never be more than 4. So if you calculated the CPI adjustment and it came out 5, it would be lower. Created a minimum and a maximum of CPI adjustments you could have.
And if we see a significant increase, at that point, are we going to that dilution or are we locked in for five years?
Locked in for five years. And there's three avenues for adjustment. One is the CPI, when they have the request, but if they make the request, they're not good. There's another one where if there's an increase in tipping fees, those can be passed, that they can automatically pass those through as above. Then there's a third request that if they have some type of extraordinary operational expense, some unforeseen issue, they can make another request for an increased budget discretionary in the city.
But it's the first two automatically go, and the third comes with the cost?
Yes, the other ones probably will come before you, just to let you know what they are, maybe to let you know their new rates and stuff like that. But there's only one rate change that you can say no to.
So we're not going to know what the full charge is going to be until we get that CPI.
That's for residential. That's for residential, that's what I'm talking about. Residential, you know. Yeah, you say about the third week following up, it's, it'll be April 20th or something like that. That will know what the full price is for the resident. But the commercial will be what you see there once again for the first year, starting on October 23rd.
He said October 2023 is... Oh, and it'll be adjusted 24. Okay, sorry. I should agree with it as well, I'm sorry.
We will be...
All the technicality, yeah, all the technicality there, thank you.
I will say that the consumer price index probably very poorly reflects increases in prices at this level, at this type of service. It's a number invented by the government and sawed by the government for their purposes, federal government that is. And it doesn't well reflect your industry. So you're using that as a standard, that's third-party standard, it's easy for us to use. But I will say that even accepting the full CPI, we're going to be getting better into that deal most of the time because it doesn't reflect things like increases in fuel and a lot of things that severely affect this industry. I think we're coming out with better into that, even though we are accepting a higher number than we have in the past. An example would be the CPI increase this past year, I believe, was 6.9%. We all know that that ain't what inflation has been. It's been significantly more. If you've been to the grocery store, it's been significantly more than that. So I think this is a very good contract. I think, I know we've gotten very good service from Waispro for many years. I'm glad we're, glad we're still able to keep this alive. And for your knowledge, everything we ask, and he says yes to. So that's the only thing you can do, to say yes, no matter what we ask. And we're good to go.
Well, I would like to mention that we sponsor, I think, everything you ever ask us.
I think you really have.
And we enjoy it, whether it's kind of crock out, I think, when the pressure of bourbon and iron, or wherever it is we're on, we enjoy doing that. We like to get back, not too much, but we like to get back and we feel like a part of it.
And you have, and I appreciate that. You really have. I don't think you've ever said no.
They've been a sponsor of the 5K every year.
That's cool.
Mayor, can I say one thing about that gentleman right there? I just been here. I negotiated with him on the first contract for our lawyers, and he has been there for us every year. And I just want to say for the city of Lake Elkhorn, thank you for all your cooperation and everything you've done for this city. All right?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the contract and to waive the bidding process. Any further discussion? Period none. Last question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, flag sign. Motion carries? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you personally very much. Seriously, you've done, you've been a good adversary and a good face for your business and it's been a pleasure working with you.
I appreciate that. Good pleasure in working with you.
Thank you. Item 9D, Mr. Administrator, would you like to use this quickly because this should be an easy one? This actually is an easy one. The city some time ago agreed to donate to the county funds that ordinarily be coming to the city and to be used for the purposes of suppression of lobbyists in the city. The difficulty is the funds were so miniscule, I believe it was $1,400, that really we could have done very little with anything with those funds. So the city said, let's just kind of keep the minimal of theirs of these programs that they're developing with a much larger funding base. So everything was fine until the county decided they needed an interlocal agreement to do that. They prepared it and the city attorney reviewed it and suspended it this evening for adoption. Basically, the more license was you already agreed to. There were actually two separate agreements because there were two separate funding sources for the employees or people. And we thought we got all the agreements done and they sent us another agreement. And the commission has already approved it, the concept of transferring the money over, but since this point, it's definitely most likely we came back in.
I have a motion to approve the interlocal agreement, the signed use of City of Lake Elkhorn settlement funds to Volusian County.
I made that motion.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, flag sign. Motion carries? Ten, quasi-judicial hearing certificate of appropriateness. Mr. City Administrator? Or no? I take that back. Does anybody have any ex parte communication to disclose? There has been no ex parte communication. We have motion to consider these items or to pull any out for specific consideration. Got a motion? Yes. I have a motion from Commissioner Basso to approve items A through E as recommended by the HBB. For a second? Have a second, is there any discussion? Period none. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, flag sign. Motion carries? Mr. Morales here? That was a long wait to throw that, wasn't it? Thank you for being here. Do appreciate it. You guys have some very critical questions. I know it's a long wait for nothing this evening, but we appreciate your support. Do appreciate your questions for this morning. Public forum, I have no yellow cards, but I'll take a blue one.
Yeah, I never yellow.
Yes. You have a motion.
Nancy, we're being totally by ourselves now, Mayor. I am sorry, I was not paying attention when you all were discussing this in the course of part. But I sincerely appreciate that we have come to this point because it's been almost three years that I've been involved. And I appreciate meeting with all of us today. It was very productive for me. No, I thought we were in your house. So I feel even better. We had a long discussion about the two options that was given. I know Mr. and Ms. Rafferty have weighed in on Compan. My neighbor mentioned to me that that is an excellent choice and so I feel like we typically a lot of cities can't afford that, that particular brand, but I feel like we were on the right path and I hope that we continue to it forward and we get this done as soon as we're better. And we look forward to meeting with you next week to choose colors.
Any additional public forum?
I have a question.
Sure. Could we stop you? If you would stick your name and address more on the record?
Alan Goode Jr., 849 Pleasant Street. Just a quick little update. I've been patiently waiting, just waiting for all these days. Easter fast approaching, the hunt is scheduled for April 8th. Be helping Karen with the festivities there. I just want to make it known publicly, we're going to try this stuff, eggs March 30th, and I'll put that on Facebook, but hopefully you guys join in and to delay some of the groups. We made great work over the last year, I think we had $2,000 eggs and we opted our egg account this year to $3,000. So a little more stuff, but the community always shows up, so I just want to make that known, March 30th. And like I said, we'll set a time for that. And then the hunt, obviously, April 8th. We'll get that taken care of with Karen. The other thing I wanted to promote quick was March 25th, it's a Saturday. We're going to do a downer for transportation. We're going to do like a touch truck event. Come for the little kids, let's make it fire to market there, the training will be there, some trucks, some machines, crystal tractors, have some input. Just do a little thing Saturday morning, mid-afternoon, get some, take pictures, sit in the seat, little alarm, make some noise. Just want to let you know about that stuff.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all of you. Yeah.
Yes, come on down. You don't have to be late there.
Commissioner reports by his own. Commissioner Rutledge?
Thank you. A couple of things, and I will keep it brief. But the first is I've been talking with staff about the HR software that is available to us through our accounting software. And I would like to open up the discussion here with you all about exploring that a little more broadly, how it works, how the HR's publishability.
That's true. Now, that HR is in the form of a web of a computer program or in the form of a company that we contract with?
So maybe dominique, if you have any additional information on that, if it's not just a software, it's...
No, if more be a company, you would have kind of a neutral person then that you would contact for any issue or complaint or what happened.
Right, it's not just software.
I'm sure it would be somebody we would use instead of Labor Council.
Instead of me.
Okay. One step below Labor Council. One step over. Okay, all right. I like... I like the idea of a third party, some, somewhere that somebody can go, um, to hear the fever. I don't know, I'm not seeing any big potential downside to that, but...
Cost could be prohibitive, and that's one thing that I'd like to explore a little further. And I guess I'm trying to get a consensus, it's broken everybody to say, to, um, drive the staff to look into that more and provide a more formalized, um, presentation that we...
Yes, we all heard the hiring of HR. Well, right now we do it, I'm sorry, you can answer.
Well, we have that functionality now, but Dominique is our HR, uh, person, contact, I guess. I don't know the formal wording for that, but she's our point person for that currently. So, the only other suggestion is just for the objectivity to putting with the third party. That would be the problem, in my opinion. And then, based on cost, it couldn't prove it.
I didn't realize you brought those skill sets to the table.
Not skill sets. I think we can get it.
Well, honestly, it's one of those things where, whether it was Lee or Dominique, would do the best they could, but neither one of them are true professionals at HR. That's not, you know, that's a, that's a very specific, very detailed field. Um, so, bringing in some expertise there would, I think, be very helpful.
I would think that, um, just briefly, you're talking about it, it'd be good to get the information, see what services, what do they actually provide in HR? When you say HR, you know, as a record deal broad, you know, it could be payroll to, you know, drafting, um, personnel roles, to caring duties, to, and so I think, you know, have to be, you know, get a better course out of our schedule. But then I'd bring back the venue of options that you can have, that would be, if we get into discussion.
And that, that's kind of what was, what I was wanting to discuss with you ultimately, is just to kind of get an idea of where we want to go with it, if we want that direction. And that way we can kind of look at it a little, dive in a little more deeply and, um, get the price points and functionality out of it.
So I guess we can do that by consensus. Does anybody have any reservations? Do we, anybody want to put the brakes on this? Or do we want to move forward with starting the investigation as to what this might look like and what it might cost, and what companies might be available, that's the kind of thing you're looking for?
Well, we, we have the availability through our software already. So, I'd like to split that.
Any, any further discussion on that, or is it just...
What is, what's it cost us to give pricing?
Basically, you're not spending any money here, right?
No.
You're just starting to, starting your membership.
Exactly, at this point.
Same old rule.
I agree. And yeah, we do need to, I mean, part of what we do is, we can't discuss this anywhere else. And none of us can tell staff what to do, because we're a legislative body, not an administrative body. So, we have to discuss it and decide as a group to move forward with stuff like that. So thank you for being part of the process.
The second point, uh, this is more, I think we may need to, it's a lead, this is more, um, something you're more knowledgeable in. So this is something that we talked about when we decided to redo the website, but we didn't decide to pay for it, that we've revisited. It's a service that plugs right into our website. People could put their phone number or email and, and then we can send out alerts about anything, it could be emergencies, it could be events, or anything like that. So we just went through that again, and we did get a price, but we didn't have the time to put it in there yet. Um, but just if you were interested in us doing that back and perhaps doing it.
Well, we can talk about it now, what was that price?
I won't say it was about four thousand a year, um, but I have to pull up the exact numbers.
Now, when you say home numbers, does it send a text, or does it...
It's a text.
So, can't be a landmine.
Correct, right. Or a... I guess my only question on that is, I, I thought there was a, uh, service available through the county that was free to us, that we could pay that off.
You agree.
Because we have no control over what gets sent out, really. Congratulations. Right, right. Thank you.
Now, it's like four thousand, is that, does that really one person signs up, or...
Exactly, two people sign up, or five hundred, it's the same price. They do try to scale it for our population, and that's what they did, they took ten percent off the normal cost.
That's not much of a scale.
Yeah. Wow.
That's not much of a scale at all.
How can you, how can you determine if, uh, if it's going to be superior to the public?
I don't know if you can, until you try it out.
Try it.
See, one of the, one part of that would be, how long the term contract you sign, your ability to get out of it, the chance of it, and a little bit of cost, you know, you know, we, or can we negotiate in a pilot program in six months, or half rate and see how it goes, or we commit to something longer term?
I think looking into those things and bringing that back to us would be wonderful. All right. Go grad, I understand, had some issues that it's not making it very palatable to much of the public. So, you keep trying to find ways, okay?
One last thing. I think in the la, I think it was the last meeting that we talked about the Personnel Review Board and reaching out to those, possibly reaching out to those folks to see if they're still interested. And I'd like to see if maybe we can before on that for next meeting, we can have, um, staff reach out and for next meeting to know where we are in that process of getting that board reinstated.
Can staff send us out, uh, before that comes back, can staff send us out a, um, a definition of what that board does?
I think it's in our term. I think it's in our term.
I mean, the charter just says we have to have one?
Yeah, it's in the charter, but it's not on the file.
Policy says whatever.
I think that would be a good thing for, uh, Commissioner Rutledge, I think that would be a good thing to pursue and put together a, a, um, a definition of it, maybe we could, I guess the commission would need to be a body that defined that, but if staff could, staff could put together a, an outline for that, perhaps, to break something to us. See what's written books, see what's been done before, see what other cities might be doing, that kind of thing.
We have a union contract. Let's ask, if we had a union contract, that's forward to, usually your union contracts, uh, will have an agreement procedure built in, which would, uh, either we got to address the Personnel Board in the union contract, or we need to try to tailor our, our Personnel Board to take into consideration these contracts, is what we go with.
So we all okay with staff bringing something to us a little more fleshed out?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rucker?
Uh, one of them...
I'm sorry. I don't know that blue cards are appropriate, they're in commission discussion. Um, we could, at the end of, at the end of commission reports, I'll have another opportunity for people to weigh in, but we'll wait till, at the end of commission reports, sorry.
Sorry. Uh, one of us in the event, um, on March the 25th at 10:00 AM, we're having an honor ceremony for one of our Legion members, William Kernstock, he's been a member of Legion for fifty years.
Wow.
Um, so we're having a special ceremony, gathering and everything for him. And guys are all invited to come out and have a little snacks and stuff there. March 25th, it's a Saturday, same day as Alan's, uh, touch the truck.
You can come to it, aren't we?
Um, the other one I have is, to me was a little bit disturbing, and I'm not going to go into full details because I asked the person that I talked to that was, that made the comments about it to send me the information in writing, and it hasn't been done yet. But apparently, a couple weeks ago, on a Friday evening, after four, five o'clock, I think it was after five o'clock, um, somebody in Casadega found out that their water was turned off, or the neighbor found out that guy's water was turned off. He's, doesn't drive, he gets around with a walker and has a dog, so he's, would probably need the water and everything for the weekend. And so they called the number that was listed, and the lady called the number that was listed, and the person was very irate, um, intimidating, hostile, and I don't know what else I could add to that, towards the customer, and, uh...
I don't need to catch it off the roster, but just, so you know that employee has designed, I don't know, I don't know how to relate to it, but I know the situation.
I don't know, yeah, the situation, but I don't know which employee.
I do, and that employee designed it.
Okay, but it seems to be that the same information was coming from a couple other citizens in town and everything. So I was just wondering, if we wanted to pay to have all the employees go to like, go through a diversity or a customer service training class, to let them know how they're supposed to act towards other people?
We could look into some different training, if you're asking that, is it open question?
Yeah, it's an open question. The one I looked at there, they had a online one, it's like ten different sessions online, it's like five hundred dollars per person to take their class online. I think it, I think it's a traffic gap to train people to let them know that they need to treat other people.
I don't, I think, I think if this was hopefully solved by the resignation, um, then, I don't, I, I, I understand, if it's been an ongoing problem, you've been hearing that regularly, we need to...
Well, a lot of the rest of, yeah, a lot of the elements haven't specifically said, they just said, I call City Hall, the person will marry crew to it. You know, that doesn't leave it up to who they were talking to or nothing, so evidently it might be more than one employee, so, that's why I thought maybe it would be a good idea if we got some type of diversity class or something like that, with employees to go through to...
And employees are best asset, you know, we'll start to talk about that, so if that's taken, that sounds reasonable to me. I'd like to see, you know, more formal outline, but I definitely agree with that.
I'm a little bit of looking further into that, because the way we interface with our, with our bosses is important. You want me to pull up a couple outlines and let you guys observe which one you want? Okay. That's all I got right now.
Commissioner Basso? I wasn't sure, we left the, the workshop where I've grown up, revisions that like C made, uh, as far as permitting is concerned. Um, did that need to be something that was voted on in regular meeting to look into it further, or was that something you remember looking to, Scott, and kind of give us some feedback, what we could, could be? Because some things you take on, nothing you can do, a lot of the things, a couple of the items that you heard.
Last name, Dr.?
Yeah, you know, I was going through the process, uh, working on this house for my sister, a grand children.
Oh, 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 okay. Um, I know what you're talking about, like for certain things, I, I was not aware that that was passed in the, uh, in the...
I didn't, I didn't hear, just more of the question, basically.
No, um, I, I would, I would, I'll take charge of that.
Okay.
Add it off, because you might go through and find out there's only two or three things on there, but you even have a choice. You don't have a choice. I understand, I remember what you're talking about, okay? All of us, all right, good.
Thank you.
Commissioner...
Y'all done? Um, Lee, this is for you. Um, I was wondering, um, that guy that was talking to us about putting the RV place in on Church Street, talking to you rather, a few weeks ago, is he out of the, he doesn't want to, did you run him off, or are we still talking to him, or what's the deal with that?
The RV, the...
The repair center.
The repair center for the RV on Church Street?
That, that, yeah, we met, we, the mayor and myself, met with the engineer and then...
I didn't meet with the engineer, I knew you were just a guy.
Did you really?
We looked so much like him.
It's, it's too late, I'm sorry. But anyway, uh, the engineer then called me back, and I was like, the problems that they had with particular site, uh, were nothing to do with city, they had to do, oh, excuse me, and, uh, they had to do mostly with the access to the property, uh, from Main Street and the inability to cut through the median, uh, right there. They finally decided, the engineer said, the owner decided not to pursue it, but he didn't want to let me know because the owner had failed to, or had decided several times previously to not proceed, but changed his mind. Apparently this time it stayed because not heard any difference, so, um, that, that particular, that particular project will not be coming about. Again, nothing to do with city zoning, which was the original issue, they had to do, and I will, that, uh, and we'll do something there.
It's literally none of my business, but maybe that would be a customer for the RV employee marshal?
Oh, yeah.
I would say, it's just a pool of logistics, traffic, it was just a...
It was a location.
I don't know what it was, I don't know.
I can attest that I was at that meeting, and, uh, we did not chase anybody away. So, if, I know that, if I'm saying that, if he was...
Well, there, there was some controversy there, he did, he did that, he did that one meeting, but, uh, we did have additional conversations and they were, we ironed most of that frustration out.
One more question for you, Lee.
I want to go.
Okay. Did, um, has, has the completion paperwork been sent in for Virginia Drive to get our grant, when you offered that?
We've never received all the grant, I mean, the, the title, except for, I think, eleven thousand dollars still outstanding between the five month, and we will receive all of that.
So we've already filed that?
And we've had a final inspection, and then we're holding out the last check, but that was just, we didn't have to do.
I have one more question. That's my last one. So, when I put them into the parking lot tonight, I see there's a big old, uh, sign out there for Crosses for Prices. Is that something that the city is endorsing?
Sign to the law.
Crosses for Prices.
Uh, that's a project of, uh...
Yeah, but it's on city property, I know it was good one. You didn't ask...
You never had a problem with it before?
I'm just asking, because I'm just...
I'm just having, you're requiring, I could have down there, we had a big, a big crowd tonight.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, so you didn't ask about putting them in front of city calls, so I'm assuming that's not going to happen.
It's early, it's going to happen, just like it's happened the last four years.
But you have permission, and our next meeting is after the Crosses for Prices.
You know what, I've never come before the commission and asked before, I've always talked to the city administrator, and that is what I plan on doing, the same thing I do every single year. If you have a problem with it, that would be the time to express yourself.
I did, actually. Because I've gotten some phone calls now.
I bet you have, although you participated the last few years.
Yes, I did, I did. Yes, I did, I did. I'm just telling you the phone calls I've gotten since I've become a commissioner.
What?
I've gotten, I've received phone calls from citizens and some self-described victims, asking how can someone attack, bully, harass, defame, and humiliate so many citizens on Facebook daily, then expect the city to support what some describe as a self-serving project? I was told it's like having alcohol poured into an open wound to see crosses in front of city hall.
Is that a public record, since you've received it?
Yeah, you can have it.
Yes, please send it.
You want me to send what I just said?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no problem, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Back to back, the beaten wounds back the right thing, and post the little people through all of that, so.
It's friendly.
Well, so there's, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
So you have concerns about crosses for crimes, and you just want to bring that forward in public?
Well, yeah, because I thought in the past, we always asked if it was, if they were going to be put in front of city hall.
I have always asked.
So Lee knows where...
And I understand as well that you work with staff, I'm not...
Every single year, I have never done anything in this city without permission, never.
So now, staff has heard that some questions have been raised, so you can, you can further that conversation and factor that in, what you do.
I, I, Nancy's direction, obviously ask commissioners for city hall, I've never hesitated to say yes, although, and I've talked to the city attorney to what you, there are certain rules you can apply to keep you free of Supreme Court discussions, and we've always tried to do that, but there are some people who just object.
The only way you can get through life without anybody, without anybody objecting is to do nothing.
There you go.
That's true.
Okay, well, I, I will reiterate that on, I can't keep this, on March 25th will be the cleanup, Lecan cleanup day, we do need to get some, some posts done, I should have called Waste Pro while they were here, we need to have Waste Pro buy-in on the, on the cleanup Lecan day, which is March 25th.
Please move over here, make sure.
Good, okay, and we have any, any flyers up around town or anything like that?
For the...
No. Could you put together just a, a small flyer that we can put up on bulletin board, if nothing else, maybe put some at convenience stores and restaurants around town, wherever people might see it. I do believe we have some pass mess. The community board's back at the gym station, by the way. Yay!
Awesome, I have water for you, thank you.
Feel free to put your flyer in.
Thank you so much.
And been very little work done on it yet, but I believe we'll have another sunrise service, it's just a personal announcement, it's not a city thing, but sunrise service at Royal Park, Easter Sunday, so.
What time? What time, what time, more or less?
Sunrise, I'll have to look at that time.
Time changes.
Um, yeah, let me, right before the sunrise, I'll have to look at the calendar, I just have to, sorry, but, so over to city administrator report, Mr. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, three of them, first, we have requests to serve alcohol at the Salisbury Festival, just a little background, the organizers are not asked to serve alcohol, another concessionaire has approached to follow that request, they safely support local charities, in this particular case, a girls' club, but it's up to the discretion of the commission whether or not you will allow alcohol to be served in any of our city parks, so that's the question.
Have you all seen, I guess seen what came to us in the packet, or are there any discussion on this item? Do you wanna, do you wanna move forward with that, or do you wanna say, no, thank you, what are your thoughts?
Everybody else's request has always been denied. I think adult venues are different than children playing in front of venues, and I can make the argument for adult venues, that you could, but when there's small children involved, I think it's just state for guns, deal we've always done.
I'm concerned too, this is the first time we've had a Salisbury Festival, and I might have it be...
Not for menus, for menus.
And with the description I have about, and all that other stuff there, there's gonna be lots of kids in there.
It's heavy family.
I got my direction on that one. The other surplus equipment, the last time we declared any equipment surplus, I understand, was in 2013, we have a list that I prepared for you with the declaration of the surplus, so then, we have a contract we're gonna bring back to for auction house, and take it to the auction house and disclose it through the highest bid process, so that's a motion to approve the list of equipment that we brought to you.
We have a motion. I make a motion that we declare the declared vehicle surplus and turn it over to the auction house. A motion in a second to approve the, the list of items from staff to be declared surplus and dealt with appropriately, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in fakers say aye, I oppose, motion carries?
I oppose.
I'm sorry.
I oppose. I'd like, I'm sorry, I, I'd like to, I wasn't...
I didn't mean to rush staff, but so, so go ahead.
I paused too now, I'm sorry, I was trying to gather my thoughts. I had reservation about this without, and I didn't ask you, I mean, I'm a reading, I apologize, but is the, the truck that we've talked about, public works truck, I believe is on this list, if I'm not mistaken?
It is.
Could we revisit that, could we take that off until you and I can discuss that? But I don't know if y'all are agreeable to that. We won't be able to tomorrow.
No, it's, we still have to bring back the contract for the auction house, we just wanted to make sure that we get the direction from the commission to move forward getting rid of this, it's accumulated literally now for ten years, and it just needs to be disclosed.
Right.
How does the process actually work?
Once you declare the surplus, the state law, the state legislature, you know...
No, I mean, I mean, the physical value, you know, the assets.
It's valued by what the auctioneer is able to get for it, basically.
They have incentive to get as much as they can, I suppose.
Yeah, it's auctioned, and the particular firm that we're using, or suggesting to use, has done so for several counties, cities, but I think it's, it's quite old, he's had trucks in there, but the truck is going out the middle, he's used to this, but we can...
How do, what would be the reasons for pulling that?
I, I have more specific questions, and I apologize, I completely overlooked them when I was meeting with Lee in preparation for this meeting, so I'd like to discuss all the work we're moving on that, I apologize. It's just that one truck though, that I'm asking to, until, until next meeting, can we?
But the truck will not be moved until the next meeting anyway.
But if we declare it surplus, is it done deal though, right?
No, you'd always change your mind.
But...
It tells us on the staff, let's get rid of this stuff, we identified, if there is something that comes to your attention, some particular piece of equipment, and I know that truck has been controversial, you can always change your mind, take it off the list, will not send it to auction, and...
Would you be willing, Mr. Roberts, would you be willing to, and willing, it's a vote, but, but would it be okay with you if we, if we both put it on the list, and if you, if you do find concerns, that you bring it back at the next meeting, since it will still be around, and we'll look at removing that from, from surplus list? It's just six and one half dozen of them, I guess.
I'm sorry, but unless we take it off, I appreciate it.
No, I understand, I understand, and I'm not trying to enable anything, I'm just asking what works.
Absolutely.
Mr. Eric, you have something you'd like to turn about as well?
It's, it's a long lineup of something else, we can go ahead and do this, but I can bring it up, it's about the same stuff, they're on a different line.
Well, you want to pull something off?
No, no, no.
Okay. Well, since we kind of bring in a discussion on that, and did not complete the vote, do you want to make a motion to amend the motion and remove that item? That would, that would take it off the list, if you got a second in the motion.
Can I do that?
Yes, you can.
Okay, then I'd like to make motion to amend this Commissioner Passau's motion.
And it's the ninety-nine Dodge pickup, is that the right one?
Correct.
So the motion is, the amendment is to remove the ninety-nine Dodge pickup from the surplus list. Got a motion in a second to remove the Dodge pickup from the surplus equipment, any further discussion on that?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
You don't need it.
Yeah, you do. Thank you for asking. That's exactly what I get.
Sorry.
I get, no.
I know, we all want to go home, and I want to go home too, but I have a quick little, I guess my opinion of this, because I don't know what's on that list, but it seems like some of those vehicles are pretty, especially the police cars, are pretty worthless. And has anybody looked into the cost to move them, because that George Gideon is in Zella, so that's not like right in the corner, what's the cost to move these vehicles from our site?
Three hundred fifty dollars a truckload. Did you put all the cars in the truck?
Okay, I just didn't know what were they, the cost of this money to go...
That's a very reasonable, that's a very reasonable question, I think.
In 2013, I better call, it was a sealed bid, the stuff never left, it was just people above it, it was advertised, you put an envelope, and you put in a, a big five hundred dollars, and as I went, there was no auction, because auctioneer's gonna get his money too, so I'm just, I'm just scared that you don't have a lot of valuable stuff out there, the cost to move it, the cost for the paperwork of it, and the cost for the auctioneer, you might...
It's a reasonable, reasonable point of discussion.
Simple!
So I have a motion to remove the ninety-nine, to amend the motion and remove the ninety-nine Dodge pickup truck from the surplus list, all in fakers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so we still have the original motion, but now amended to approve the surplus equipment list plus the ninety-nine Dodge pickup, any further discussion on that? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Professor John Street, thank you, Commissioner Roberts, for removing that item, I was concerned because that topic has not been discussed or solved, one who is going to take responsibility of that, I would be sure. So that is my question on, here we are right now, without any photographic evidence, because I did request it, and I am going out Monday to do that vehicle, we're getting rid of the evidence of city equipment being inappropriately removed and stripped. So where, where are we with that, is my question, is this vehicle was, was gonna leave here, we have any further discussion on who is responsible for stripping the vehicle? Transmission is not the entire vehicle, all of the inside, all those items that were stripped from that vehicle help the, whether it's worth being at all, those items were not to be given away, those items were the city's property, and were not to be handed out to staff. So I said, as I said before, this is our tax payment, that's our equipment, as, as residents too, and there's no one other before it. You guys don't even have photographic, any photographs of any of the equipment that is being listed here, and there's no discussion of what happened. I see in those page, there's payment for the cameras being repaired over at one of the works, magically now, here we have this, when I requested, video from that transfer, now those cameras are repaired.
I wonder what, what is the value of that truck, can anybody?
Well, I have a rough blue book search, I think it was about nineteen hundred, but I have to double check.
I think, I think you're misunderstanding.
What happens to this vehicle, you might mean?
Is that due to working order?
It might be, no, I'm not a whole words writer.
I think you're misunderstanding my, what I'm saying.
No, I, I understand.
It's a principle of...
I, I understand your statement, I was just trying to get to the point, whether we spent more money paying all of our staff, our attorney, everybody else, and the listeners who listen to this every single time it comes up, I wonder if we're spending more money there to maximize the value of the truck.
It's not a principle, principle is that we...
I understand the principle.
I mean, it has to be concealed from us all the time.
Really? You have evidence of that? You have evidence of that?
Do you have evidence that that was...
No, you just, you made a statement, people steal from us all the time.
I said, I said, if you let this go, people will be letting, or getting, steal from us.
Exactly, I was stealing from us.
That was Ms. Bishop's words in the last meeting about this entire...
I'm sorry, you could address, address the meeting, but not from, not from the...
It's too much being covered, and if it's, if it is a simple situation, then it's clear for us.
That's an interesting question, this has been mentioned several times, this is the first time I've ever heard anybody say that the vehicle was stripped.
I've said it a lot, yes, I have.
So what I ask you to do is email me what, what items were stripped from the vehicle, and the evidence you have, because I have them stripped, and I will listen to it.
I'll email you after I've taken my photographs and my way.
Well, that's what the condition of part, you said that it was stripped, so just, just let me know if it was stripped, email it to me, and I will come to it.
I will after, and you know my name.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think it would also be reasonable to ask public works, you know, what they may have scavenged up, but just because something's missing doesn't mean, I mean, if there's not a side view mirror, it doesn't mean it was stripped, it might have been knocked off ten years ago, it's a twenty-four-year-old truck, or...
But it would be good to know what items, because I've never, I've never heard someone say, I've heard say it was taken off-site, that someone tried to do transmission, it didn't work, brought back, but I've never heard anybody say, exactly, who said it, I've never heard anybody say the car was stripped, or anything, so we all know these, what people think it was stripped, all the deal.
That's completely reasonable, I agree.
Mr. Simpson, the vehicle was not in the same condition as it was when our previous public works tractor.
It's called evidence.
Mm-hmm.
Give me the evidence of it, I mean, that, that doesn't tell me anything else.
Okay, I will bring you the evidence, and I will do that job for you.
So, we have, did we...
We haven't voted on.
We haven't voted on the motion as amended? Okay, on the, that's right, and I appreciate your.
You voted.
On the amendment.
Yeah, you voted on the amendment.
We voted on both?
But then.
I was thinking we had, but I, I was late. I couldn't have been wrong either way. Um, we said yes.
On the amendment. I didn't hear the motion.
Yes. I, I, I do believe we did vote on, and I'm not hearing any dissent. It's close. Um, all right, back to you, Mr. Administrator, for, uh, item thirteen. Let me go or some, some surplus equipment stuff. I've never been able to find it in our policies on a. Something for the surplus equipment to, let's say, we got something that goes in a surplus. And a sequence of what to do with that piece, like, can we come up with a policy that says, okay, this piece of equipment's on surplus? Any employee that would like to put in a bid for this piece of equipment, put in a sealed bid?
The purchasing section thirty-two point one point zero zero deals with sales. It says all sales of commercial property, except trading in commercial property which has become obsolete or and unusual. Or the sale which is otherwise determined to be the best asset in the estimated value. Um, shall exceed three thousand dollars shall be made to the highest responsible that are ever given as inviting bids that have been given as required by this article. Unless the city commission determines that donated property to other governmental charitable organizations serve public purpose. And then I think we have a policy that says below the three thousand, the city manager sets a policy, um, how's the biggest pool? Kind of, that's.
I was wondering if we could add to that, put in a sequence of disposal, like, any employee that would like to bid on it? Get their price or no.
It would be, they're a citizen. The way the code, for it, it would have to be worth less than three thousand, because over three thousand is a public bidding. So that's where code is.
Well, that's, that's why I said that's our way we can work on it to get it changed.
You can, yeah, actually, is there, I understand a code. We can amend the code. But there, but it's not a policy. We have that.
That's what I meant.
Our code is. Under three thousand, yes, you can have a policy that says this is how we're supposed to do it, but over three thousand, we have to amend our code. If that's a job.
Yeah, if we can come up with that and a policy that follows up on anything before the, if you're gonna have a price value on it. Will allow a sequence of events to occur before it goes out to the general auctioneer. Okay. Uh, just for discussions that gets, it's risky. I've took, it's very difficult to vote in the appearance of the property.
A lot, a lot of places. A lot, a lot of municipalities and government agencies do that. They, they give the employees the first choice and then it goes out to public, then it goes out to final auction.
If it's a reasonable thing to do, there's a way to do it legally. I have no problem with that. Just, that's my concern. And I just, that's all they need to do, but what's the concern? I don't, like you say, if it's, if it's a common practice, I, I don't mind it at all.
I used to take my couple of trucks, whatever, so I drove that truck. Once it was taken, it was five or six year. Loan, loan paid off, I was getting a new vehicle. That's super.
Can't carry it.
Vehicle is a self-personal vehicle. And the big benefit to me was that they always took better care of it. There was less maintenance and, uh, and gave that public interest that you want.
And there's value in that.
Um, I, I, there's one other thing I want to talk about. Um, can, can we consider an ordinance that requires quiet generators at, when we have functions like strawberry festival? Like, we're going down the street there and there were so many generators running, you couldn't hardly hear talking, standing next to somebody talking. I know they're expensive, uh, but I, I just think it's class act of the day to go. And even if the city had to, um, purchase a couple of them and have them on hand and tell people that showed up for the first time without one that didn't know. Hey, first one's on us, you know, but if you come back again, you get a quiet one.
I'd like to consider. Is that for functions like parking in the park or the, or parking in a park or a desk? Okay. But strawberry festivals or strawberry.
You know, just any, any kind of function we have, it's like.
Is that a reasonable thing to, uh, to consider adding a, you know, the, everybody kind of knows what a quiet generator is, I mean.
And we're just talking about putting it in the same section, you know, the noise components. Basically, control. I don't know nothing about generators, but, um, the best way to measure noise is with a desk computer. So I don't know if we have a function desk computer to do it. I don't, I don't know nothing about generators to say, um.
This one does, this one does.
Why don't you say?
This one.
It's true, but it's a quiet generator is known in the industry to be exactly this.
Sure.
You know, that's what I don't know. So otherwise you have to measure it with an arm that requires a desk computer. Otherwise you get into very subjective standards like excessive noise, we mean, what's excessive? One person may not be excessive, so about that. But if there's a particular type of generator.
Yeah, industry says.
You write it in as a model or equal.
Yeah.
Equal to a run-of-the-quiet generator, is what you call it.
Run-of-the-quiet.
Run-of-the-quiet. And you can spell out a model and everything else and say that, but this won't. Anyway.
We can work, well, and it may be some regulations that are on the, you know, that maybe address that, but we'll look at that.
Mr. City Administrator, we have one. Well, we actually have two last items, but we're up to thirteen C now.
Okay, the last two items. The last two items we have approved by the state, uh, development fund. To receive approximately eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, to re-meeter the city's order beer system. Forty-one percent will be forgiven, the principal, and the eighth grade will be approximately two percent, maybe over twenty years. So let's say, and the best part is there's no increase necessary in the, um, the rate structure for, for our service. Also establish a very negative relationship with SRF, because we then have, in the works now, the, um, loan program for the. Refurbishment of our distribution system. And as we talked about tonight, a smaller system will be on the heels of that. So those things are all moving forward very, very nicely. Last update I wanted to give you was that we have placed ads for the superintendent of Public Works system. Uh, in three newspapers, in Orlando Sentinel, the Daytona, whatever it is. General, and, uh, Beacon, and we have put it now also on Indeed. Uh, we have received, uh, no, no applicants to meet requirements. But we're still receiving.
Still open to receiving?
Right.
We're still open to receiving now?
We're still, we're still open. I just want to give you the answer.
Thank you. Well, that brings us to the final item, closing remarks of the tournament. Anybody who gets going home? Who is your? That's it.